This regular meeting of the Marshall Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present and that this meeting has been called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is here. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the MISD Board of Trustees, we are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievements, set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions; that is a responsibility of the superintendent. This is not a meeting in the public, this is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. You are our guests and you are welcome to observe and listen. If you wish to address the board in the public comment portion of the agenda, please fill out the public comment form found on the back table and return the completed form to the superintendent's secretary. We are pleased that you have taken time to join us this evening and we thank you for your interest in the Marshall Independent School District. Someone like to open us in prayer, please?
I will. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today. We thank you for just the beautiful days we've had here. We thank you for the recent fall break and opportunity to get recharged. Lord, I thank you for our principals. I thank you for the hard work that they do, the leadership that they provide. As we celebrate them, I pray that you would continue to shower your blessings upon them, their leadership, their relationships with their students and staff, and just everything that they do that you would allow it to prosper and go well. I pray for our district and I pray that you can help us continue to move forward. I lift up Dr. Langley. Thank you for her leadership and for the, just the administrative staff and all the jobs that they do. We ask your continued guidance and direction in our country and pray that you'd help us as we educate kids and that we would prepare them to be successful in whatever avenues that they choose. Bless this meeting, bless our discussion. May it all honor and glorify you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Would I have the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. First up, we'll have our data review with Ms. Crims.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. We have a very quick data review and this will be looking at it from the district level. So it's just MISD. I do have more WEEDY data, is what I call it, broken down by campuses, broken down by student groups. But we're going to take just kind of the bird's eye view of it and look at our comparison data from our common assessment that we gave for 2021, our first common assessment, as compared to 2020 common assessment data, just to see where our students are from last year to this year. So we start with our reading, language arts. The green, of course, would be a growth from 2020 Common Assessment 1 to our 2020-21 Common Assessment 1 student group of that same grade. So where you see green, you, we had growth. Where you see red, we had a little dip. And if it's white, that means there was no change. There are some anomalies that you'll see in there and we've taken a look at those and I've talked to the coordinators and we've talked to teachers and tried to figure out why some of those anomalies exist. And specifically, I'll point out the one that's probably glaring to you all. Second grade reading, they were at 88% last year. Dropped down significantly, put my glasses on, to 35%. So visiting, yes, that's kind of what I did. And made some assumptions, but we did have those assumptions clarified, both by my elementary ELA coordinator and the teachers. So when the teachers came back last school year, the kiddos had been out for COVID. They were somewhat still some remote, different places. Typically, in second grade, they quit reading the test to the students. Well, we kind of bridged that gap a little last year for COVID when they came back for their first assessment. So we gave them a little more support last year on their Common Assessment 1. And we didn't provide that same support this year for Common Assessment 1. So that's basically why there's a big dip right there. So the rest of the dips are small and not as consequential as that dip and glaring as to why that happened. We had a lot of growth and very excited to see that much growth from last year to this year. But we've had face-to-face instruction, so should be. Moving on down to math, very excited about our math scores. Significant increases in almost every grade level. And the ones that were not, were slight. Fourth grade math is probably the one that took a biggest dip. Fourth grade concepts get a little harder. The questions get a little longer and there's more words. And we know that most, all of our tests are reading tests first. So some shoring up to do in fourth grade, but very, very excited about those grades. All right, looking down onto science. So science looks pretty good overall. We have a new science coordinator. He is a rock star coordinator, but he's from secondary. And his was his first year, or first time working with elementary. And so he has very high expectations. And elementary is a lot of vocabulary and he built the assessment on the pacing guide and on the rigor of the teaks. And so what that tells us is we have to up our instruction. So that's, you know, kind of the first, second, third grade were a little down. Other grades looked very, very good. Eighth grade science struggling just a little bit, but he's working with that eighth grade team. We have six-week planning sessions that the coordinators go. We have teams that come over for two hours. They go to the campuses, to the junior high for two hours and two to three hours. And they actually plan the next six weeks framework with the teachers. And then they support them through the six weeks at PLCs. So really shoring up the instructional planning piece as well as the execution of the lessons in the classrooms. So those should come up over the next few common assessments. But I feel confident that the coordinators are building assessments on the rigor of the teaks, which is what the STAR and the EOC are, built on the rigor of the teaks. And so we want our instruction to be there. So instructions usually the missing piece of the puzzle. Social studies, any questions on so far? Social studies, kind of a mix of red and green. Again, had a new coordinator building social studies test. And again, social studies is a test of reading and vocabulary. So making sure that we're teaching those vocabulary words at those young ages. At the very bottom, you'll see some glaring on government and economics. That was a pacing issue. So when he built the assessment, he built it on where they should have been and they weren't there. So students can't always answer questions over content they haven't been taught yet. So that's just a very, very big overview of what our common assessment for this year looked like for last year. The coordinators have gone over the data. They've also gone over the WEEDY part of it, specifically for some, our student groups, and looking at how they performed and then sharing that with the teachers as they're in their planning sessions. Questions?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to administrative reports. First item is principal appreciation recognition. Dr. Langley?
Yes, yes, we are very excited this month. It is Principal Appreciation Month. And we have a video that we have put together that we want everyone to see. And then after that, we have a token of appreciation that the board and I are going to get out to our principals. So let's go ahead and watch that video.
I have been a principal for five years with Marshall Independent School District.
I've been a principal now for 10 years. I was a system principal for two, so altogether 12 years.
This is my third year as principal at Marshall Early Childhood Center.
Today is my first day as principal at San Houston Elementary, STEM Academy.
This is my first year.
I've been here at Marshall High School about two and a half.
16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 2021. We're in 2021 now?
Yes.
So this is year five?
This is actually my first year being a principal. And it's been a lot of fun and I've grown a lot in the short time that I've had this position. Very excited to see where it goes. My staff and everything has been more than supportive of me and I hope that I've been able to return that support back to them.
My favorite thing about being a principal is how many lives I get to touch. Being a teacher, I only have just that little small portion. But being a principal, not only are you responsible for one class, but you're responsible for multiple classes, multiple adults, multiple families, multiple parents. And so I like the, being a principal because I can touch so many lives.
The opportunity to work with the wonderful staff at MEGS and parents and to have an opportunity to grow as an administrator.
My favorite thing is to see the growth in the students and to have them be proud of what they've done in the classroom and to go, get to go into the classroom and see what they're working on.
Helping kids. Hundred percent, no doubt.
My favorite thing is getting to interact with the students. You know, my job generally is looked at as something that is there to be a disciplinarian and to run the school. And while, yes, I am doing those things daily, the best part is getting to get out of this office and be with the kids at lunchtime or pop in their classrooms and see them. They're so great. And that's, you know, that's something I really want to make sure that everyone in Marshall knows is that our P2Y children are the same as every other campus and that they are full of love and knowledge and that they just exude that every day. And it makes my job just fantastic.
The people. I love being among the people, being with the students, being in relationships with the parents and the staff. I just love being among the people. I make jokes and stuff with my parents all the time. When they come in and COVID kind of threw it off for us last year. Because if you come check out here or anything, I'm asking, "Uh, where are you taking my babies?" And so just having those relationships with everyone that's involved.
I like the kids. That's my relaxation place. Going into classrooms, being with kids, in the cafeteria with kids, the kids. That's easy. My main goal is to make sure that every single student in this campus, all of my scholars that come through here, whether they come and stay for a little while or whether they stay the whole entire time, is to make a difference in their life.
My main focus is just making sure that I'm building a community of support for my teachers as well as my students.
To get our kids to believe that they can do the work. And trying to train my staff on figuring out different methodologies as far as instruction to get them to believe in themselves. Because once you do that, kids will do, they'll hold up to your expectations. So trying to get them to believe they can do it and then trying to get my staff to incorporate different instructional strategies to gear toward that mentality, just to expose them to new things, get them to believe that they can and just go for it.
Marshall's a great community with a lot of rich tradition and history. There's a ton of community support. The people here want to see kids succeed. They want their school system to be the best in the area. And I feel fortunate and blessed to be a part of it.
We've got a fantastic group of campus leaders here and we have a few that weren't able to be here tonight. But board members, can y'all come back here and help me grab these things? So that we can give these to our folks. I think both of these are out here tonight.
I see it's missing, Andrew.
Just getting these over. See, I'm gonna give these back over to Jessica. Is that one of them? It's Patrick, yes, she's not here tonight either. All right, just take her. Yeah, we'll eat. Come on, come here. Now, what's this one do you have? I have this one. This lady, come on up here. Got a... Quickly, put your name on. This is a good one. All right, thanks for that. All right. Come on, there. Ms. Bell, I wish you the shots off her on the other side. She is. Got our little mavs?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. All right. You got two?
Johnson and Johnson.
Johnson and Johnson.
Not to be confusing, wonder.
That's right. Thank you all. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
You don't have to have it for yourself.
No, is there? If you have, I have Mr. Knox. Mr. Knox, there he is. That was needed.
Mr. Gregory.
Gregory. Thank you. Appreciate all you do.
We say, "Morning."
Yes.
Come on up here with Andrew.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks to you.
Ms. Applegate. Come on up. You missed your video.
Hey, you were counting hard though. I figured how long they were there.
That's what happened, that's what I didn't have. Thank all.
Thank you for the appreciation.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all the time, not just this month.
Yeah. That is correct. You guys are doing a great job.
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
Thanks. Okay, yep.
Yes, thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Item two is the facilities update with Mr. Ash.
There you go. We've had some changes over the last couple of years, especially with the V and stuff like that. According to the cat office, we own 234 acres. We maintain 190 of those acres, okay, and grounds and stuff like that. I've got, normally if I have a full staff, six in our regular grounds. In the past five months, we've had five. I finally hired one and then lost one the day before. So we're back to five. I'm interviewing one tomorrow, so maybe I'll get back into staff. We have five or six regular in regular grounds. I have two in what we call athletic grounds. But athletic grounds takes care of all the complex around the high school, from DAP, all of it. Okay, they also support our athletic events. Whenever we prepare the stadium for a football game, the aftermath of it, that's what they do. But they also step out when necessary for like Prestion, STEM, those are big campuses. They'll go over and help them as well, which we have to do. We help each other. We try to keep up with everything by keeping all of our equipment going. We run right now six commercial mowers. We had seven, lost one. I just bought them and lost one. But hopefully, if the budget here, maybe in May, if my budget allows, I'll pick up another. We like to have one for a spare that we can fall back on, which is just several. Maintenance with the additions, it's stuff like now, everything that's under our roof, we consider facilities. We have 1,121,922 square feet. I have 13 employees right now in maintenance. That's counting me and the secretary. We have two committed to the warehouse. They're always there because that's our central place for deliveries and shipping us out. Nine out in the field, 10 if you count me, because I go out there too. We, to give you some perspective, we have 618 air conditioners, 260 exhaust fans, and we have one technician to take care of it, okay? But he does a great job. And that translates over to the electrical. We got one electrician, one plumber. But these guys do a good job of helping each other. If we have a big job, so we're replacing a compressor, then these guys will step over to help tray. He's the lead, they help. But it also helps him get exposed to it as well. He's not here every day, okay? Sometimes jury duty, something like that. Electrician's the same way. By allowing these guys to be exposed to other trades, we don't, we miss them, but we don't miss them as bad. We can step in and generally take care of whatever's necessary. Our work order program now is different than when I started. It was all paper. We had a wooden box. You went out there, you checked the box in the morning, you checked it at lunch, and you turn your paper in. Now we're working off iPads for the last four years. Each one of them has an iPad. The work orders come to me. I assign them to whatever technician that goes immediately to them, wherever they're at. We know where in town. In the past four years since that program's been in place, we've closed 18,000 work orders. In that system too, we have a preventive maintenance program. I run 354 schedules. That's schedules, not work orders. One schedule like for the lift stations may generate 156 in a year because they're coming out on calendar automatically to them. And they come back to me whenever they complete them. We've done 6,225, I think, since we started that program. And that's what we're about. We're not a repair service. We can fix anything, okay? But our job is to maintain, to not have to fix. And to do that, you've got to be out there looking ahead. I told my roofer, "You'll be the least known person here if you do your job." Because you're going to be on the roof fixing leaks before they start, before they ever see it inside the building. And that's what your job is, is to maintain these roofs. We have leaks, we have to do repairs, but that's going to happen. We got a lot of buildings, a lot of square feet, a whole lot of equipment that we maintain. With our air conditioners, five of our campuses have controls. And with those controls, we're able to run an air quality program inside the buildings. This is something that was a frontline defense against COVID that people don't know anything about. What it does periodically throughout the day, different units will come on on their own, open their outside damper, bring fresh air into the building, and at the same time, it's tied to an exhaust fan because you can't just keep pumping air in one spot. It comes on at the same time and starts pulling air out. So you have a constant change of air inside these buildings. And that's a big deal both to the people inside and to our buildings as well. It's been a big help, I'm sure. Although nobody knows it. It's been a frontline deal for us. We also have a, just past August, a year ago this past August, I bought an energy management software program. We've always kept everything. We have records you wouldn't believe from back in the day. Got it last August. We didn't want to start there, so me and Rosa Nixon put in three years' worth of utility bills inside this program so we could hit the ground running with it. Takes us about six weeks. So now we're able to track all these changes we do. When we changed the LED lighting at the high school, we saw the effect of it. We could trend back to 2018 when we didn't have anything. The new air conditioners are different same age. So the program or the report we lean on is cost per square foot, okay? And we're constantly looking. I told her, she works with me on that, she's a control technician, that whatever you say, good or bad, you ask one question, "Why?" "Why is this good?" Or "Why is that bad?" And that's how you learn, you move from what we've done at the high school with LED lighting in-house. We still do LED lighting ourselves at the maintenance transportation, all of our shops are LED, all of our sheds are LED. We're working on the inside now to convert to them as well because it makes a huge difference on energy savings. The biggest is the high school. The new air conditioners, the controls, and the LED lighting has taken 50,000 a year off the utility bill, the energy cost. And that's a huge savings. We learn from that so we can take it and transfer it to other buildings as well, especially our older buildings like MECC or MEGS or something like that, or one we're in, this one right here. We're learning from that and then we will take, as budget allows, what we can do in-house and start to move that stuff to these buildings as well, just to try to recoup as much cost as we can. We're constantly looking for ways to save, all the time. And we're in it every day, every day. If you ever see me, you want to question me or ask me, ask me. Everybody's got my phone number, I think. This whole class, there's a lot of people have my phone number. You can flag me down on the road, I don't care. You can talk to me anytime and ask me to come out and see us. We don't mind visiting wherever we're at. But if you ever have a question, just give me a call. But as far as overall, we're in pretty good shape. 618 air conditioners, I got one now. Right now, that's it. I just want to start this break, run back here. But that's it. That's not bad. That's not bad at all.
I asked the directors to come and so every third month, we have, the principal's meetings are every month. Every third month, I asked the directors to come. And so Brad did the first presentation, I guess back in September, I guess. And he gave so much information that, I mean, that we didn't know. Especially, you know, the piece about the air coming through and pushing it out and then also explained why some people think it's cold in their room and some people think it's hot. Well, in the wintertime, you're getting cold air pushed in there. Your heater's still working. It'll close back up in a few minutes, just give it some time. Wear a sweater and everything will be okay.
That's right. That's what we tell them.
But he had so much information and I think maybe, I can't remember if it was Kathy or who it was on the board, I was telling them that you were doing that and they were like, "Hey, have the directors come and speak to the board." And I just thought, and this was, it's just a little bit of what we talk about at the administration building, but I thought it was very important.
Very good information.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Brad.
They do so much. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Ash.
Very good, very good.
With no notes.
Yeah.
I know, and all those memories. I thought the same thing. I thought, my goodness.
618 air conditioners. Okay, moving along. Item three, superintendent's report.
Yes, just a few updates. First of all, our AgBarn, which is still not ready. Not good news on that, but what we are waiting on is a, part of an electrical panel that is actually going to make our fire and smoke alarms go off if they need to. We can't put animals and we can't put children or adults in there without this piece. We are hoping that it's not off of the coast of California on one of those ships sitting out there. I don't know, so hoping it's not. But we're still waiting on that, aren't we, Brad? Yeah, still waiting on that. In the meantime, Mr. Chilcoat is going to talk to you all in a little bit about getting the parking lot completed while we're waiting on the fire alarms to get fixed. So that will, hopefully, Ben Parking Lot will be starting ASAP. As I said, he's going to do the presentation on that in just a little bit. And then, very excited, last Wednesday, Mr. Chilcoat and Ms. Glanton and I, and also Ms. Bell, met with the architects for Marshall Early Childhood Center renovation. So they came in and we showed them the gamut of everything there and said, "And this is how much money we have to spend on it." So they're getting some ideas together for us and going to be able to present that pretty soon, we hope. Those are really the only updates I had on building buildings and all of the things going on with construction that I did want to let you know. Mr. Chilcoat sent to me today. Our active positive students for COVID are at .001%, which is very exciting. And the active positive COVIDs for our staff are at .004%. So those are fantastic numbers. And also some more fantastic numbers. Everybody in the district has been working so hard on making sure that we have captured the numbers for our economically disadvantaged students. This time last year, or at Snapshot, there was, 63.2% were listed as socioeconomically disadvantaged. And as of today, which I think will even have a few more come in before Snapshot, which is not this Friday, but next Friday, we're at 76.15%. Now, people would probably go, "Well, why is that good? There's that many that are socioeconomically disadvantaged." Well, the numbers are what they are. And we want to make sure that we capture all of those students so that they can be included in our demographics. And so although that's not ever a great number, we've got to make sure we're capturing those kiddos and being able to give them all of the support that we can. So we are very pleased that this campuses, the principals, folks here at the administration building, our PMS people have worked super hard trying to make sure that we're capturing those. And I do think we'll have a few more. But I was very pleased that we've more than, you know, we've got double digits improvement over last year. So just wanted to report those numbers to y'all.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, moving along to the consent agenda action items. We have the regular items on there. In addition to that, we have the school health advisory, the SHAC members for this year. That list is hidden right before you. Ms. Pedersen's here for that. Have any questions? We have a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second? A motion by Ms. Warwick, a second by Mr. Huffins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Matters requiring board discussion and action. Item one is considering to approve the nomination of Helen Warwick to attend the National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute in Washington DC for January 2022. She has been to this before and we applied for a stipend and received that to pay for her entry fee. And she is going to pay for the rest of her travel.
Right, the district is out nothing on that.
Doesn't cost the district anything and she will be a good representative for us in Washington. in Washington DC. Make a motion, we approve.
And I second.
Have a motion by Mr. Palmer and a second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item two is consider possible action on the Harrison Central appraisal district selection ballot for 2021, 2022. Our current board members are, and the ones that we were nominated again last month, are Ms. Huffines and Mr. Palmer. There's 5,000 votes total. Each taxing entity gets a certain amount of votes to a lot. That's listed in there for us to see. Currently, I believe there's two Marshall SD board members, two Halls SD board members, and a representative of the county, correct? That's correct. And if you look at the vote breakdown there. Yes, Mr. Tiller. Well, he's the county. Yeah, they gave, yeah, and I've got the vote total from last time. They, they gave the vast majority of theirs to Mr. Tiller, the county did, so. All, us three, those three entities have over 4,000 votes by themselves, so we have split the votes between our two candidates, and 1,000 votes guarantees you a position, but by splitting our, what is it, 1379, actually one would get one more than the other. Hopefully, they'll both be nominated on there. I also reached out to the city and asked them to give us their votes, which they've done the last two election cycles, I know for sure. So I sent an email to the mayor, and she's going to present that to the board, so. The nomination would be, I mean, the motion would be to basically split our votes, or what is one more than half, one to Mr. Huffines and one to Mr. Palmer.
689 versus 698.
Okay. It doesn't matter when, either one can get 689 or 698, it's the same.
All right. I make the motion that we split our votes between Chase Palmer and Ted Huffines.
Second? Do we need to state for sure?
Please.
680, which is which, or the total?
Yeah, who wants the extra vote?
Y'all want to arm us?
I think, I think Helen wants the extra vote.
No, I do not. Been there, done that.
Doesn't matter. All right, Ms., we'll give.
Chase, you're the chair of the thing right now, so you should get the extra vote.
I'm so excited. Okay, so 690 for Mr. Palmer, 689 for Mr. Huffines?
That's your payment.
All right, motion by Ms. Warwick.
We have two things we're mending tonight. The first thing is pretty standard. We had a van accident, and we had insurance recovery, so we have to up our revenue and then up our expense so that he can spend the, the money to get the repairs done. The other one will change the bottom line. It will, it will increase the deficit from 478,500 to 491,48650. The reason for that is because we can only pay for things within the school year that are received or for work that is done within that school year. This is some playground equipment that was ordered too late to be received during last fiscal year, so we have to close that PO out, and it'll have to be paid out of this budget year rather than last.
Where's that going? LMA.
LMA.
Make a motion, we approve the budget.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Palmer and a second by Mr. Huffines. We approve the budget amendment. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item two is considering to approve the parking lot renovation. Mr. Chilcote?
Good evening. We did a sealed bid proposal opening the Wednesday before break, and what, the scope of the rubric, we have selected Rayford Truck and Tractor, which is Bud McCracken, to do the Marshall High School band parking lot in the back. This was originally supposed to be when the front was done, but when the ag barn was started, we didn't want to tear up the park, the brand new parking lot, so we pushed it to this year. It will be the same type of replacing the front parking lot as in the back. It'll be pulverizing and doing a cement treat to the entire parking lot at six inch minimum depth. There will be a tack coat, two inch compacted hot mix. There will be a smooth durable tie-in to Maverick Drive, so it's not just the parking lot, it's actually the driveways that, that connect to Maverick Drive as well. So it'll go to the street, not just to the driveways.
Fix all the, all the.
Hot holes or speed bumps that are not very good. Good shape right now. We will re-strike the parking lot. It will be reconfigured for unloading and loading of animals, so there may be a different one-way, maybe an unloading area near the ag barn. So we may lose some parking spots. We will come back with the banned football field.
Football field.
When we re-strike. And then they will dispose of the debris and cleanup. It does have a two-year guarantee, and if, if from start to finish it goes perfectly, he says a four to six day timeline. So a week.
Plan to start, if approved, when?
As soon, if it's approved tonight, Brad will reach out to Bud tomorrow, get a contract going, and Bud will start immediately.
Yeah, he had thought just four or five days, maybe.
Yeah, four to six day timeline.
That'd be great.
If the weather or whatever, if everything is perfect.[1742.02]